Ismail, why don't you give us your update?
Yeah, sure. So on my end, I kind of have two things that I'm balancing. So all the little bugs when it comes to like edit or any crashes that we had, I keeping those pushing those to development right away. So that for the next build, whenever we have that up. Um, and on the other hand, I'm working on the chat reply. So yesterday we actually made really, really good progress. Me and Jerry had a few work sessions going back and forward. So basically what I can do now is reply to a message and it would successfully reply and registered in the backend. And I would get the information from the backend. Now, the last step would be to basically get that Figma design that Chantel was working on and have it basically implement it with our current APIs. Now, the good news is I already did a lot of like the kind of the wiring where the cache, sending the mutations, getting it back to subscription, all that is like set up. And I think after I just have, after I designed those components, connect them, replies should be, should be good to go. We'll start testing it. Exciting, I know.
Sorry, I'm on mute. I'm talking. I said, yeah, that's great. That's awesome. Ian had an input, some input on it yesterday from WhatsApp. Ian, did you talk to Ismail at all about that?
No, we're talking about the linking, like if you tap on the prior message that it brings you back up, right?
Yeah, would you be able to show your screen on it? Cause it was pretty cool. And we were debating on, I wonder how hard that'd be with pagination.
I can explain it. I've already deleted the app from my phone. It, it's pretty straightforward. Basically, uh, when there, by, by chance, Chantel, did you get any screenshots of what we were going back and forward on yesterday?
On what part? Sorry?
The, in, in WhatsApp with you, Todd and I, did you happen to get any screenshots or videos of any of that? Like when you tap on the truncated response, how it scrolls back up to the area that the original message was?
No, I didn't get any videos or screenshots of that because Ismail had already said that we don't have the ability to be able to click on the initial message and scroll up.
Let's talk that through. We need a visual though.
There could be two solutions to it. So first though, I like the idea of going back up to the previous message. Ismail, it sounds like there's a concern with pagination. Could we not simply skip, let's say, let's say there's, I don't know. I know it doesn't quite work exactly like this, but let's say we're on page seven and the original message is on page two. So we gotta go up a bunch. Could we effectively skip everything and just bounce to where that original message was in rather than like having to reload all of the content between where we're at now at the bottom and the, and the original message, which might've been from five days ago, you know?
Yeah. So first of all, when it comes to a lot of these apps, iMessage, WhatsApp, a lot of them store the data locally. So they have the full picture. So that means when they want to fetch a certain message, they can't because they don't have to page it. They just, they have all the data loaded, right? They can pretty much start at a single point. Now for us, it's going to be a little bit difficult because we are going to paginate. Now, if we want to have it where obviously this wouldn't be just related to replies. This would be related to any message. I know a lot of apps, like if somebody sends you a message from like five days ago and like, you know, the chat went on and you have like a hundred messages after that, and you click on the one from five days ago. It would be nice to start on that message, which a lot of apps do do chat apps. Now for us to do it, we would have to, I think we already have the message key from the notification. So we can pass that message key to the get all message query, which Jerry or Amit can probably have that as a start point. Where it'll be like first message or so on. Now, the only challenge with that would have to be backwards pagination. So right now, when we paginate, we start from the first message and then we start scrolling up. So we start going to older messages. Now this one would be the other way around where you start with the old message and then you start getting newer messages. So we would have to somehow figure out how to paginate backwards like the other way.
Piece, uh, cause I was thinking about that when I was talking to Ian about it yesterday. If you, if you paginate up and down, don't we just need the page that the message is on? And we paginate it, you know, if someone were to jump to it and then?
Yeah. So that's what I mean by backwards pagination. Like right now, we already paginate if you're scrolling up.
Yeah.
But we have to page it now going the other way around. You're going to be scrolling down and it's not going to be preloaded. Which normally if you scroll down, it's already preloaded. That's where you start.
Yeah. But what if you jumped back to messages from weeks ago?
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. We, we have to give the API, the message key. And then the backend has to basically start us at that point. Like maybe it was a little too much just before it and after it. I don't know. And we will basically be like kind of in the middle. That's what most apps tend to do. And then when you scroll down, normally that would already be paginated, but in this case it's not going to be. So we have to have it support pagination scrolling down.
Yeah, unless we wanted to load them all in, I guess.
Well, that's not a, that's, that's not reasonable because if, if you have like 500 messages, if it's like a big group message or something and you have multimedia and there's two, the user's not going to wait for like five seconds, 10 seconds to get the?
There could be another solution potentially too. Uh, I mean, I, I like the idea of it scrolling to the original message. In most cases, the original message is going to be pretty close to the one that it was responded to. So they're probably not going to be going very far, but um, let's say that it was really old and you know, it was a week ago and there's a hundred messages in between. We're going to show a preview of what the original message was. It might be truncated because let's say it was a really, really long message, 20 sentences long. So maybe we cut it off at three lines and kind of throw some ellipses at the end of it, just to show like, you know, there was more. Where are we getting the content that shows that original message? Are we copying that message in, in our database? So there's now two copies of it? Or are we referencing the original message to show, to preview what the original message said in our?
Are you talking in the notification itself?
No, I'm talking about in the chat.
What do you mean? Where are we like in the, where do we truncate the message in the chat?
Can you bring up the design for this real quick? It's easier for me to explain if, if we're looking at it.
Ian, you're referring to the response.
I'm referring to.
With the preview of the message responding to?
Right. A preview of the message that you're responding to. So.
That's, that's unrelated though, because if we're going to support like starting out the message, it doesn't matter if it's a respond, if it's a regular message. Oh, like, you know what I mean?
Well, um, yeah, Chantel, can you zoom in on one of these that shows like a preview of the original message and the response? Okay. So, all right, perfect. In this example here, we have Katie said originally, or is that Katie that sent the response? Katie sent the response?
No, this is the original message and I'm sending the response.
Okay, alright, got it. So, uh, it says, we should, uh, check it out, you know, and then it goes on. So that text, we should check it out where it's a preview of the original message. We're not creating a secondary entry in our database to show that text. We're actually calling the original message from the database to show that text, right?
No, we're actually going to have, and that object, that message object is going to have a parent that's going to have that message in it.
Right. But there's still only that, that text that says we should check it out. That still only exists once in our database though, correct?
Hmm, I guess Jerry would be able to answer that. But we do have the key for that message.
Okay. So what I was going to suggest is that if pagination does become more work, then maybe it's worth, what if as an alternative, let's say we truncated that message to three lines because it was 10 sentences long and we don't want to show that whole thing. Could we make it so that when the user taps on it, we simply reveal the entire message, reducing the need to scroll back up to the original message? Would that be an acceptable alternative, John?
But we're kind of switching topics here though.
Sorry. So my question, well, make sure we're on the same page. What we're talking about is if there is a previewed message, like in this case, it says, we should check it out. And let's say that was like 10 sentences long. So we don't see the whole thing because we're truncating it.
Well, that goes back to, we were talking about notification first. We were talking about coming in from a notification, not necessarily a reply. And if the notification was old, that was the original conversation that we were having. Now this, yeah, now this is something else.
That, okay, that's not what John and I were talking about yesterday. So yeah, what, what, what I'm referring to is, is viewing the original message in a reply.
Hmm, okay.
So if, if we are on the message, you know, we've already opened it up or in the chat, we see what we're looking at right now. And I tap on that original message, we should check it out. Could we have it scroll up to the original position automatically?
From here, scroll up? No. If like, if, if we're coming from a notification, again, that we can pass to the API till it's start there. If we're already in the message, we can't scroll up because we don't know how much we have to scroll up because of pagination. So it would be different.
That's what brings in my question about the alternative, which is if we're truncating the message that's 10 sentences long to only three lines, but we want to read what the original message said, could we tap on it and expand it to reveal the entire message?
It's possible, yeah.
So John, that?
Whole message in the first place.
What's that?
Why not just show, show the whole message in the first place?
So we could, but that's really, you know, pretty much everything that I've seen that shows inline replies, like what we're doing here.
True.
And then, and like there was a lady in the Maggot Army chat yesterday who posted a really long message. And you know, maybe today I want to respond to her, but if it was going to show the whole thing, I might be reluctant to because it fills the whole chat.
Yeah, especially if three people.
Right.
Yeah. And, and, and that case, the backend can just return the whole thing and we'll truncate it on the front end. And if you click on it, we just reveal it. That way it, we don't have two copies of truncated one and the full one.
Now, and just as an observation, like in my Android chat, when someone responds or, or, or responds with an emoji, it shows an entire copy of the whole message that was just responded to. So I know, I know it happens. I'm not saying it's the best way, but it's not abnormal to have someone respond to a message and have it reference the entire message that was originally sent. Not sure it's the best way, but it, it does happen. It's not always truncated.
Yeah. I mean, we can go either way, honestly, because like the backend will just return us the full message. If you want to truncate it, I'll just truncate it on the front end. And then, and then, um, reveal it if, you know, by add action, user clicks on it or whatever it is. Or we can have, and if we later want to show the full message, we also have that option. It's, it's, so you guys can take it through and whatever will, it's possible.
So yeah, my, my vote on this would be, John, if, if you're not opposed to it, I would say that we pull in the entire original message, but truncate it visually on the front end. The user can tap on it to reveal the entire message. That way we don't need to scroll back up to the original message.
Yeah, I want to see a couple of design options too, where not options, but just, um, additional examples of what it looks like if three people replied to the same long message, let's say. Just curious what that, what that looks like where.
Um, each one's going to be separate. So like, remember how we, we, we made each one. So like you would see that, that line, like, yeah, right there. And then like you would see three of those. If they're, if they're right after each other, they would not be connected. Like we don't connect them. Each one is its own thing.
That's right. So it's just a copy of, yeah, yeah.
Yeah. Like just think about copying that one three times, like copy paste it three times. That's basically how it would look. And they won't be connected. There's no form of connection between them. Now for replies.
Well, wait, hold on. Let's say somebody writes, um, a message that is very, um, engaging and 20 people want to comment to it. We want to show a preview 20 times, like that, not a preview, but like a re, a copy.
That's a good, that's a good argument for heavily truncating the original message. If I'm not mistaken, that's actually the same thing that I, um, iOS does.
WhatsApp.
Is that it would, yeah, I mean, it, it would basically, I don't know how else you would do that. You could probably draw like a link. Maybe between the continued messages, but I think that would be confusing. I don't know of another way.
Well, what actually what iMessage does, it creates a thread where if you click on that thread, you'll just see all the messages.
You see seven replies or something, right?
Yeah, correct. So what, 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 but what we decided to handle it separately, we do it like WhatsApp where each one is its own thing. And there will be a preview of each message there. Again, to kind of encourage people, if, if something is like really that much engaging, maybe they should create a custom topic and talk about it there. But we don't create threads or we don't group them. We, we talked about it yesterday and we decided to go with the WhatsApp approach.
I'm doing some testing on iMessage right now. John or Danny, can you respond or just do a, a reply to that same message that I've been responding to and see if it links us? So Danny, respond to that same one that I originally replied to. It starts with, I'm not.
Okay.
Yeah. So see, it, I mean, this makes sense. It, it does show how many replies there are. And it's cool. Like if you tap on the, the thing that says three replies, it'll actually show like a new thread on the front end. That's really fancy. I don't know that we need to go that far right away.
Well, we kind of had that discussion yesterday. So we were debating whether we want to do that or if we want to do the WhatsApp approach where each message is basically its own thing. They're not connected to a thread. Um, so that's kind of we, our, like I said, our, our, what we agreed on yesterday was we are going to go with the, with the approach of, uh, the WhatsApp, but we're going to have the look of iMessage.
Yeah, yeah, that makes, I mean, it makes sense to me. John, is there any specific change that you want to make to that direction? I think we're going the right way.
I think that people are going to write a message that's really engaging and 20 people are going to want to respond to it. I don't think it'd be a good idea to show a long message 20 times over and over and over again.
It would, I mean, I'm in agreement that that would be, that would be weird. I don't know if it will get used that way or not. It's hard to say. I mean, I think, I think I'm making a safe assumption.
I think it would, I think it would have got used like that yesterday.
Uh, right, maybe, yeah.
And, and WhatsApp, that I think is a pretty popular app and I mean, if people are using it the way that we're using it, they will see those truncated responses on every reply.
I mean, it's a little more reason to keep the truncated responses short, you know?
Yeah, that, that part is no brainer. If we're going to do, especially if we're going to do multiples, but they have a better, this is where, uh, we really need to show. Ian, if you could show what you were showing me yesterday, because like that's a very critical piece of what they're doing. Otherwise, what we're describing is, is really, it's missing something.
If you still have that, can you quickly screen record from your phone that what we were talking about yesterday, where when you tap on a response, it bounces you up? Because that's what you're talking about, John, right?
Yeah. And it highlighted it.
Yeah. Well, and that's, that's one thing that Ismail's saying that there's a problem with, but beyond that, it will still show the truncated response for every person that replies.
John, am I understanding right that you're saying that you do, you think you'd like to see it as a design where it does show a thread of multiple people responding to one, one message, like in iMessage?
Yeah, but in better than that. Like it kind of makes sense if 20 people respond to the same message.
Sure.
I don't need to see the preview 20 times. I know after five times which one it is. Just the replies would be helpful. Which is I guess a thread in a way, but like maybe it doesn't need to be, I mean, it's similar to our preview.
So what would someone see? Yeah. So if there's, so there's a, it's a popular, um, topic or a popular post. And a, a bunch of people are responding to it, but then there's a break because people are talking about other things. And then someone responds to that popular one. What would, what will we see? So we wouldn't see, uh, the original message it was someone responded to? We wouldn't have a reference for it? Or are you saying that we would have a truncated preview? Like how would we know that someone's responding to the, this popular message?
Just if the replies were grouped together.
If the replies are grouped together, like, you know, okay, so it'd be more like a, yeah, like it's right.
Yeah.
Okay. So this video here shows the, um, the jumping, because that was what Ian initially thought.
Are you sharing your screen? I don't see it.
Oh, I'm so sorry. I definitely thought I was sharing it. I'm having it play. Okay. It's already finished. Do you see how it's kind of jumping? I can play it again.
Yeah. Can you go to the beginning?
Yep. Okay. So did you see where I just tapped? I'll go slow. I tapped on Ian Reader and then it shows the preview of Todd Diori, I Will. So where you say tap on Todd's message above this one, that's what I just did. And then it took me up here and highlighted Todd's message, I Will.
Yeah, the highlight thing is pretty cool. Now this, this method, John, though, this isn't keeping a thread at all. This is exactly what we were originally talking about doing, which is just a bunch of individual, uh, individual messages. So if we were to change it to the?
If we were going to do it like that with individual messages, we would be missing this big piece right here. So I feel like this works for them because they do have that functionality.
Because it bounces back up to the original message, but it only, it only does that because it's not revealing the full truncated message. We don't really, I mean, what's the benefit in it bouncing back up if we can still reveal the original message?
Well, you, what if you wanted to long press and reply to it?
Uh, that, that's true. Yeah. Like if you wanted to reply to that as well.
Yeah, like, okay. So you, I wrote a message yesterday that had, uh, 30 reactions. Okay. If people could write 30 reply, people did write replies to it. They just couldn't like long press and reply. And people were messaging me directly because they couldn't long press and reply. So I, I'm sure it will happen. It happened yesterday. So let's just say 30 people want to reply to a message. They have the long press on it, um, to reply. And when they do that, we want to know which one they're replying to. So we would show a little preview of the one they were replying to. Which we, you know, get all that. So, but we don't need to show that preview 30 times is what I'm thinking.
Yeah, it's kind of funny. This is almost like, it kind of feels like we're competing with our own topic system at this point. I get it. I know. I understand. I, I totally get it. It's, I don't know how unusual of a case this is going to be. I guess, I mean, in these really big group chats, it might not be uncommon.
People have been trying to reply to messages constantly. It will happen multiple times a day.
So how would we show them as a thread then? Because there will be people who, like, let's say five people respond to your message and we have them threaded in some visually easy to understand way. But then person number six comes in and just sends a new message, breaks up the thread. Now number seven comes in and tries to respond to the original. I don't know how we line that up visually to where it makes sense anymore.
Yeah, that can get a little, well, it can get tricky. Also in terms of if you respond to that message, like let's say you have, let's say you, you want to reply, like you sent the message, five people replied, we have them in the thread. And you hear the sixth one to reply to your own message. You know what I mean? Cause then the visual would be different for you because your messages are going to be on the right side where theirs was on the left. So that also in a way breaks the thread.
So the way that Discord does it and the way I've used it many, many, many times is when I'm trying to catch up on a conversation that's going back and forth. I'll do this where I click the original message and it scrolls me up to that. But then that message will be a reply to a different message. So I'll click on that and it'll just keep jumping me so that I'm always staying in the conversation. Kind of like a thread, but it just is a jumping situation.
How is it jumping?
So, okay. So see on this thing, how I clicked on that and it jumped up to here. And then I clicked on this one and it jumped up to here.
Yeah.
So if there was, if Ian was responding or replying to another message and the preview came here, I could click on that and it would jump me up to that one. And then if that one had a reply, I could jump up to that one. So it's just this constant jumping to the previous message based off of the replies. Um, and that's one way that I've been able to stay part of the conversation. I'm not saying it's the right way, but it's a way. And I think that WhatsApp also functions that same way. However, Slack and iMessage don't function that way.
Yeah. Well, it's kind of important, isn't it?
Well, I mean, I don't, I don't know because on one hand, if it's good enough for Slack and iMessage, it's good enough for us. On the other hand, if it's good enough for WhatsApp and Discord, it's good enough for us. So I'm not really sure if there's a right or wrong way since these companies are huge and they're doing it two different ways.
Yeah, but they're also doing, in this case, WhatsApp is doing something that is going to be very challenging for us to do.
With the jumping.
Because of pagination, you know, and, um, I mean, none of them have really groups of like thousands of people in them either. Just something different. It's more like Reddit situation now. So it's probably should be some type of hybrid approach. If I had some time to sit down and draw this up, I think I feel like I could come up with.
The first thing that kind of comes to mind for me, I don't really like love this idea, but maybe it could be visually appealing in some way. What if, um, what if we tap on the truncated reply? And instead of it showing up, ba- basically it would show up inside of a, uh, like a sign of a, kind of a pop-up window. And in that window, there would be a reply button, which would give the user to continue communicate, you know, like that, that's one of the issues, right? Is that if somebody else wants to reply to that, but it's way up and they don't know where it's at. If they tap on a truncated response to reveal the entire thing, we could reveal a reply button somewhere so that they could also reply to that message.
Um, or we can have it behave as a regular message. So what that means is if. If, if they want to reveal it, they'll just click on it and it would reveal it within that gray window.
Oh, yeah, and they could even send like emoji responses.
Yeah, but, but if they long press the, the, the message, the gray message.
Right.
It would just act as a regular message where you can react or reply or.
That's, yeah, that's what I mean. So, yeah, we could do reactions or hit reply. Um. I mean, that makes sense. It's just a matter of keeping the quote-unquote thread visually. Aligned if you have a lot of conversations happening simultaneously, um. The way iMessage does is, is if there is a reply to a message, it shows that there is. A reply or multiple replies. It'll, it'll say like three replies. And if you tap on that, it will bring up the entire thread, which is the original message and all replies to that message. That would basically, I mean, and it effectively even in iMessage is like a pop-up. It's something that goes above the entire chat. We're on a whole new layer now.
Which I think that is probably the best solution.
I mean, I do think they pretty much nailed it.
I just don't like the way the lines everywhere didn't make any sense.
Like in the chat between you, Danny and I?
Yeah, and ones we were doing yesterday with Chantel. They were getting super confusing. They were all over the place.
If you open that chat with, um, between you, Danny and I, do you see Danny's last matches says, sounds good, and right above that it says three replies? And when you tap on three replies, it opens up the thread?
Yeah, I feel like that is probably. An obvious. Solution for how we should display.
The thing that I feel like they missed is it doesn't, it's not even clear that that three replies is a button.
Yeah, true.
If we said view three replies. And then it loaded that up, it'd probably be more intuitive.
And also, um. It's not really clear that this is the one that's being responded to. I mean, it kind of is. But not a hundred percent, um. I feel like I could design this better.
Do we want to start with kind of the low-hanging fruit at least and get inline replies going and get that started?
Maybe, but I also don't want to re-architect it if that's not going to work.
Ishmael, correct me if I'm wrong, but it, the. Reply function that we're talking about building where it would show a truncated response. And then the connected message to it. Is that a lot, or is that like a, a long? Is that a large amount of work that we need to do to get that working on its own?
Well, that's what we originally discussed yesterday, and we have a good, as I mentioned at the beginning of, um. My kind of, um, review, um, my updates is where I have it where. I have that working technically in terms of you can click, you can reply, and it would create it in the database, and you can retrieve it. And the cache updates properly. The only part right now that's missing is the UI, the component to have the parent message connected to the. Message that was replied to. Where, or I should say the parent and the message. So right now everything is set up. I just need to create the UI to connect them both. So, for the past three days I was working on this, so that's why I would say. No, it's not that hard, just because, well. Creating the UI is going to be a little tricky. This one's a little bit. There's a lot of edge cases in this UI, but overall, I would say they are too. It should be up.
Yeah, I mean, John, if you don't, if you don't disagree, I mean, with the amount of work that's already gone into it, I think we can at least get some level of inline replies started and then. Build something better. I mean, we're talking about trying to build something that's an improvement upon what Apple has done with iMessage, so it's going to be a tall order. I, I believe we can get there, but I think it's going to require a lot of designing.
Yeah, I don't think they did a very good job.
I'd really like to get something out. I mean, it's not to say that we couldn't do like a stage two, you know, better build later.
Well, um, yeah, I'm normally of that mindset, except. We have a lot of activity in very large chats, and if we put something out. That creates chaos. It could be a really bad backfire situation, and I don't want to, because it could, it could be chaotic. Um, if we're not careful. With.
I can say we can have, like, apply as an other production. We can have it for a specific group for testing purposes and see how it goes.
Yeah, for sure.
And we can keep improving off of that until we feel stable. And then we push it to the production, but I do agree with. Um, Ian, in terms of, we have to have something going, like, this, it's kind of hard to get a feel of it until you actually are using it and, you know, it's there.
Yeah, true. I mean, that's how we designed the chat in the first place with topics and stuff, it's kind of. Getting it down and modifying it.
I agree with the chaos concern, um.
Do I have a call of five minutes, Danny? I just got a notification. Um, there's no way we're getting up.
Oh, that's DNA. I'll, I'll talk to him.
You can handle it?
Yeah. Okay. It's just a kickoff and go over some, yeah, I'll do it.
Okay, I got way too much ground to cover here today. Um, what were you saying, Ian?
I, I agree with the chaos concern. Um, I don't think it will be a challenge for you, Todd, Danny. Um, Chantel and I to get into a group chat and emulate what chaos could happen. Pretty easily. I, I have a good idea of what kind of unusual things we would want to test to see how it would actually visually look. I, I do agree with you, though, that it could be a problem, especially in a chat with ten thousand people inside of it. But I don't think it's going to be hard for us to get a really good feel. If Ishmael can finish up, just getting the connection on the front end, the visual connection, the lines. And then get us into a dev environment where we can start testing it. I have a feeling we're going to know pretty quickly whether or not we can roll that out, or if we're going to have to keep iterating.
Yeah. Yeah, okay, um. It's just, uh. It's going to be. A major distraction. I don't, I don't want to use that word, so it's not the right word, but. Um, it's going to occupy. A tremendous amount of resources. For me, number one. Because I'm not going to be satisfied with it, uh, being a mess, and, um. For it to not be a mess. I'm going to have to put a lot of my brain power on it, and I have very spread out right now.
But I, I will say this is kind of a big deal too, like replies is not something, you know, just, oh, just like, hey, I'm another feature. No, this is kind of like.
That's exactly what I mean. It's a huge deal. It's, it's. It, it has the potential to be very, um, valuable and, but the potential to be a disaster. If we don't get it right. Were you, somebody to say something?
I was going to say something, and it's, this isn't really solutions-focused per se, but I have used WhatsApp over the years and have always found it. Super, super, super confusing, so I don't know that we should be copying anything they're.
Well, that's kind of how I, I feel like it was a little confusing. Look at Chantel's screen recorder here, and then looking at the iMessage tests we've done. I feel like they're all confusing.
I, I was just going over WhatsApp conversations from years ago in a group.
I feel like I could make it better than both did. I'm sure I can. I'm positive I can. But for me to do that, it's like, I mean, that's like, that's all WhatsApp is, is, that's all they do, you know? Think of all the things Circles does. And things we're trying to do just to stay in growth mode and everything else. If I only focused on this, I could definitely create a better design than both of them put together. Definitely, because that, I'm just looking at this thinking like, come on, like, there's things I would change right away. But. I still, you have to think of all the contingencies around it. I was going to take a lot of my resources.
We don't rush it. Like, I feel like maybe we're stressing out a little bit, maybe we shouldn't rush it, like.
I feel like, sure. I'm with you on that, but that means like really putting it on the shelf, because either, like, either has, because it can't really be pursued without. Dedication. And if we don't have. Even, no matter how slow we go, that doesn't really matter, besides, I don't want to go slow. That means like you're tied up or anybody else on the team's tied up with it. Because then that slows everything down. We have, there's a lot, my, my primary focus always is making sure we retain users. And this is a not, very nice to have. Reply and thread. Is very nice to have, probably does add to some retention if we get it right. But there are things that add far more to retention that are quick hits, like quick little things, like. Dynamic links, like. Just having the share button in the right place, just like little things that. You know, being able to share a screenshot into, into a Snapchat story. Um, little things we could do quickly. That, um. Bring people together. There's a million things, like just that People Finder screen yesterday that I saw on a new user. That had absolutely no suggestions of anybody. It was just really, there was, it was. Not functional in the way it needs to be. How many other people? Got stopped right there, you know, things like that, so. I guess I'm, um. Very torn on how much dedication. We should give to this. I suppose, I mean, we can go ahead and try like the basic version of it that we've discussed. I have a feeling we're going to quickly realize that that's, it's just not production-ready, which means. We either have to shelf it or dedicate, and that's, I keep coming back to that. We either have to shelf this or dedicate to it.
Tough one.
What we got?
Tough decision.
Yeah, I mean, everything matters. Every minute of every day matters right now. Today's Friday. Everybody's going to break off for two days. Um. I, I'm not convinced that the next build I get isn't going to have problems with those topics. Um, Ishmael said. The flatlist, the animated flatlist is going to be fine. We haven't seen it, so we don't know. I mean, we, we're not going anywhere with a build for a long time if the topics are all out of alignment and out of sync that we just saw. That's in the current QA build. So, I mean, we're, we're jumping so far ahead. Of where we maybe. Aren't even in a good spot at the moment. We really, I really want to get a build like right now. Um, because all this is, is pointless. If our topics are destroyed because of the pagination thing we're trying to do. Um, and the flatlist that we tried to upgrade. Uh, among other things, I know there was some other things in there too that were questionable. All that stuff has to be flawless before we get into this thing that's going to be a long road to not be flawless. And so it has to be.
I, I agree, but I think since we are. Very close to our original. Um, approach. I kind of want to, like. Go through with it, have a reply. Uh, with the way we have it now, that, you know? And have that separate in a branch ready to go, and then if you want to build off of it. We have something that's working that's going to build off of. So whether we decide to shelf it or focus on it, it will, it will benefit us either way, but not. Having it like this in the middle, I feel like. Might. Well, it's not the best idea since we're to put a lot of effort into it.
Yeah, and I, I get, I'm with you on that, but we, what we got to do now, first and foremost, before the end of the day, which is the end of the week. We need to get a build with everything we have as of last night. And, um. Yeah, I want to see if we don't have a bigger crisis on our hand, because like, if the top, if we blew up the topics and they. Are completely broken now. That's a bigger problem than any of this, because this doesn't even exist yet, but we can't go backwards. We can't regress. On stuff that was already working pretty flawlessly. Um, so that concerns me a little bit, and there were some other things in there. Um, Amin got some things in. Uh, I want to talk to Jerry and Amin about these dynamic links as well.
I, I sent you a write-up on, on dynamic links, so here, here's what I found. So there is a configuration change I had to push. However, Apple. Hashes this configuration for twenty-four to forty-eight hours, and there's nothing you can do to force it to refresh.
So the old one, you mean, is cached?
Yes, the old configuration, it doesn't include the ones for, um, it is website, but the configuration for. Uh, entertainment profiles. So that should resolve itself in twenty-four to forty-eight hours. The other thing is, and this, this is the, this kind of regardless ruins what you were trying to do, is. If you click a web link in circles. The behavior, it does not recognize that it is a universal link in Open Safari anyways. So if you share a circles link in circles, it opens Safari and not routes to the appropriate page. Even if it is a working universal link. I tried to do that in a chat. I, I sent you a recording. I tried to do this with Tech2U.
And what happened?
Uh, so when I.
Tap the link?
Uh, look, look, look at the video I sent you. If I, if I tap it in circles, it opens in the webpage. Even though it is a working universal link.
Yeah, but that was the whole point of us doing this, right? So it doesn't do that.
Circles on the app side has to recognize it separately. Uh, from a universal link. If I go into that universal link from Slack. It will open circles as we want it to.
Okay, hold on one second.
There's, there's many layers of configuration. Though, not saying configuration, but cases. Sorry.
Okay, um, one second here. Messing up like animation. Everything takes me twice as long. I had already told them exactly how I want it. I gotta tell them again, anyway, and I want to get that in. There's a lot of little things I want to get in. There's a lot of, there's, I have like a thousand little things that will definitely contribute. To retention and engagement, and that's where I'm getting. Worried about this. Derailing. The li, the little things that will absolutely, I mean, we're getting more and more and more users, more invites. And that's more opportunity. But it also is shining a light on lost opportunities. The lost opportunities drive me nuts because we had it. It's like when we founded Tech2U. And we would spend money on advertising and the phone would ring. And the person answering the phone doesn't value the money that was spent on the advertising, and they don't try and book the appointment. They are discouraging. As though the phone just rings magically, but it doesn't. Like every, that's a lost opportunity. Every time the phone rings. You want to book every single appointment if you can. That would be the goal. Like, of course, that's impossible, but. Whether your business succeeds or fails depends on. The percentage of those calls you book. If you're booking a super small percentage, you will fail. And the same with our app. If we get people coming in the app every day in, in droves as we are having them happen. But we fail. To book the appointment, if you will. Then what was the point of them downloading the app? And so. As much as I want this reply and thread. I also don't want to squander the opportunities. The phone is ringing and I want to book every appointment.
Yes, see, this is something I, I talked to Danny on the phone last night about. I told him those, uh, discover groups, like the, the groups that are in the top of your chat lobby. I think those are going to be a huge, yes, great.
Yeah, and that's probably already done, I bet, once we get a means update, and that's a huge value add. Or toward retention. Exactly, those kind of things that we can do in a matter of hours. You know, make a, they make an impact cumulatively could be. Um, but very, very impactful compared to just one really good feature. Um, so anyway, I know I'm kind of venting about this, but it helps me to talk it through to get my. Um, mind straight, get my priority straight. Because how we prioritize things every step of the way, day by day, really, really matters right now. Things are happening super fast, which is good. Which is good, but it's also, we can quickly lose opportunities, and I don't like doing that, so, um. Anyway, I, I left off with, I sent that Slack message to Brian. Um, Jerry, you were saying, if I watched the video, what did I see?
Uh. If you go on video. I shared the link, a, a working universal link in two separate places, one in a circles chat and another Slack. I clicked it from Slack. One in a circles chat and another Slack, I clicked it from Slack, it opens circles. If I click the, the link, the same link in circles, it opens Safari.
Yeah, why is that?
I think what circles needs to do is it needs to, the whatever component in the chat. Is making those links clickable, it needs to identify that that is an internal link as well. And route it from there, other than that, I feel like this is like some. I, I don't know, bug or feature in some, in, in iOS that's causing to route.
Would it mean you don't want to uh look at that?
Correct.
Did you send that screen report to Amin?
I will, I would just let you know what, what the current behavior is, so even if we had it working right now with the universal links. It would not open, it would not route to that profile. So now, the only way that you can have a, a podcast clickable in chat with the current state of the app is to share it as a topic.
Right, which is not really, even then, like it's, you have to go to the topic, I kinda, I wanna share it in the main chat. I mean, we can do it, and it'll, it'll still.
It'll still make a card, it'll still make a share card.
The card, and the problem with that one, then, is the card like also starts moving up too as people comment, and then that, the card moves off the screen.
Oh, so that, that would happen anyways if you type up a message in main chat, it's not like you can't keep that message visible.
Yeah, it's true. So it's the next best thing. But also I want the link to be, so that, if that link is actually a sh- shareable link though, what would happen if you shared it? Like you said, if you shared it in Slack, for instance, it does open up the podcast in circles.
Yeah, share it in Slack, you share it in iMessage, you share it in any other app other than circles, and I think, okay. I, I think that is almost like a feature in iOS. That if you wanted to like directly open a webpage to prevent you from like universal, like I'm not universally from. Like endlessly looping through in circles, and maybe there was some reason they wanted you in the web version. They would do it, cuz like, I, I bet if you put like a Slack universal link. In Slack, it would open Safari and not Slack unless Slack was explicitly configured to handle that link. And I think it's more of a feature than a bug in iOS to prevent you from like endlessly looping.
I see.
Well, and this, that opens up a can of worms too, because when we're looking at these links, you've already asked that we wanna look at like preview, preview images and stuff.
Yeah, which we do.
Right.
But the library isn't supporting that.
Right, it's, it, it's a list on a thousand things to do.
As it is, there are a thousand, and I, we gotta prioritize the best ones. Alright, so let's start with getting a build this morning. With, with everything as of last night, I wanna start with that because I don't wanna, I don't wanna um. Go into the weekend with a broken app that, you know, there's some little things we could have fixed, and potentially we could push it to production. If it's, cuz there are some improvements, let's, let's start with that, let's take stock. Um Ismail and Amin on the front end, can you guys tell me what all uh has been merged? Over the last few days, including Wells PRs, and um what would be included in a, in a build this morning?
I can start with mine at least, um so obviously we have edit now, um I don't think that's part of production yet. Um is it?
No, edit, edit chat.
Is not, yeah, so that, that'll be one of the big ones, um I improved off of it too a little bit, um at, so from the. Um from after the build you have now, um what I mainly did was like bug fixes. So my main concern was chat replies, but I did some bug fixes on the side, for example, tho- those topics. Pagination is added, I reverted it back to flatlist. Um.
But you went, you went to uh animated blacklist, so it's different.
It was, no, it was, I went back to what we were originally using.
Orig- but how did you get the animation in, then, you said it was still gonna have little topics dropped?
Oh, it always had it, but it was disabled, so I just enabled it.
I see, okay.
You talk about the entering animation, right?
Yeah, the entering, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, so it always had it, it, it was just disabled originally, so I just.
Any of the uh indexing or anything?
Uh no, tha- that all went back to working, um but of course we do have pagination. Now, which, which we kinda need, because you won't be able to see all topics without. Um now, that's, tha- that's the only part that I would say that, hey, let's test that really, really well and see.
Yeah.
If that's working properly.
And you know, and by the way, we could, just as a, a short-term fix, Jerry, we can delete some topics out of, let's say the Maggot Army chat, that has a lot of topics. Um I think I put a test event in there, or actually, I put that in the circles.
Put it in the investor chat.
Yeah, but we can delete that, we can just delete some stuff out, for, in the short run, just do some cleanup.
Um you don't have to delete, you can just reorganize the topics, cuz if it's just the first twenty-five.
True, well, wait, you said reorganize?
Like reorder.
Uh but that is, right now, that is going by whichever one has the most recent activity.
I'm just saying, if, if John wants to like remove certain ones, or if she wants certain ones to show. Until we get pagination, then you can just have it set to sort of.
But I'd, I'd rather just clear them out, like there were ones that were added accidentally when, when people were sharing um people profiles on accident. When they thought they're adding people to the group, for instance, did we ever?
Whatever's easier for Jerry, uh it doesn't matter either way.
What, what's that, uh which one?
Like the.
Is deleting that topic easy, I guess is what we're asking?
Yeah, I can delete the, the topic and all the messages in it, if.
Okay, then John, you can just like send him a list of the stuff you don't want.
Where the, like if they're after twenty-five, I wouldn't even know which ones are there, are there. I mean, I could see the ones up to twenty-five, um but I would say.
And then you build, you would have pagination, so, and it would be pointing to production, so you can, you can go ahead and see them.
Okay, yeah, good point, okay, so um what else is good, would be in this build?
Um so on, on my end, like I said, edit and pagination and some minor bug fixes, like I honestly have to go in and kind of get them, but nothing of them was major. The major two is pagination and edit.
You did something to, that would hopefully prevent the pagination duplicating, right, you have some code in that.
Oh, yeah, 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 um that one, yes, tha- that was a big one too for.
Yeah.
Yeah, go uh the message pagination, the chat pagination, yes.
Right, I would like to get that in before the end of the day.
That is, that's, that's merged in, ready to test.
Yeah, did um, did you have Amin review that with you, you feel pretty confident in it?
Yes, you reviewed it and we went over a little bit over chat, and I think we, we both were comfortable with the approach.
Okay, okay, cool, um okay, so anything else that you could think of on your end?
Hmm, those are the major stuff that I added in that build.
There was what stuff? No major stuff?
Those were the major stuff, like there was probably minor bug fixes here and there, nothing like crazy.
Okay, what about Wells PRs? Forget what uh he had going on, stuff around the podcast live or play button, right?
He can give us an update.
He's, no, he's uh off today.
Um yeah, but Rodney's PR was like, there's one that it's a little bit, um it's a medium one. Where he worked on the play pause button, I remember how like, if there's an episode being played. It, the icons for play, it should be paused everywhere in the app, like, I mean, other uh episodes. So that's what he works on, that's his PR, that's the one that he's uh, that's the one that's medium.
Has that been merged?
No, not yet, like um, I just, this morning, I left some comments for him.
He's off today and Monday, so we're not gonna see him till Tuesday.
Um, yeah, cuz like I, I saw some changes, I just, that I want to understand. Why he made those changes, like using uh those made there. That's, that's, that's all, I mean, if we really wanted it. It's um, so to, to explain one of the change that I saw, like, is like um. So state, so the state, um it's what's drive the UI, and you can get the state in different ways. The way how it was been doing originally, it was doing in a way. That it would not cause re-renders for, for a component, he changed it to a way where whenever that change is gonna. And a cause a render, whether you want it or not, and that, that hook, where, where, so that was. So that was, was called inside a function, that function, it's, it's like the, the core of all of this player thing we're doing, so. If my causes renders in other places, and when it's related to podcasts and episodes, so yeah, I just. That um.
Okay, so, so uh, so okay, well, I guess we're not gonna be merging that code yet, okay. Okay, that's, that's fine, um were there, were there other PRs from him that you can recall?
Yeah, there was like two small ones, uh one for um the table area of something.
Oh yeah, he increases, yeah, around, I think around.
Yeah, and other one is like for the streak screen, yeah, like um. Uh what is it, says here, streak screen view and update, oh yeah, he added like the um. Input to the track into when a user like view the street, the streak screen.
Okay.
So yeah, that's.
Those small ones were merged?
Approved, when we can merge them.
Okay, okay, let's do that, okay.
Move the gift me button, I just remembered that, so.
You did remove that?
Yes.
Okay, good, okay, um and then what do you have, Amin, that is ready to, I guess maybe you should show us the. How far you got on those, the topic selections, the chat.
Mm-hmm, um that was like um approved and merged. It was, um the only, we put it and share.
So we need that in the build, okay.
Yeah, next beta will be there.
And then what else did you have prior to that, I think there was some.
There was some fixes, like some, like some changes here and there, um. Like we, like we did it in the beginning of the week, like it's like this share group link. That was like a delay to be shown.
Yeah, okay, wanna see that.
Um we had some font adjustments to the iOS presentation, and also. So some frontend change that was requested by backend for blocking feature for SOT, so he, so the backend can know. Whether to hide someone from the SOT or not.
Okay, did you get a chance to work on the nav, we talked about this day before yesterday, navigating? The um, from the notification says you have a new friend, and then navigating, when they navigate to the users. To do the.
Yeah, uh no, I did not do that, I was work, uh looking first at the um, the issue, the bug of um. Um yeah, you know that, the bug, if you kind of start convo, then, like, when you were like showcasing that with Todd, remember like with chat, with your time?
Yeah, did you fix that bug?
Um yeah, I, I know the reason I was, I'm, I'm halfway there, I still didn't finish it, I didn't got time to work on it like four years today. So um, but I can like prioritize the other one right now, because the reason why I started with the bug because.
The bug is more important.
Yeah, and also um to me, like uh, uh I knew like I would need more time to have it to fix it, because. I needed to understand what's going on there, what's like everything, uh it's, it was not clear for me what to start with, tha- that's why I began work with it. As for like the other um thingy, wha- with the, if you click on notification, it should be starting the convo, that's straightforward, okay. I, I know what I need to do and where to do, so it's not gonna take a lot of time.
Okay, what was the bug again with that happened?
So the bug, if you just like um finished onboarding, and like you have the self-convo. And you just send a message, when you just send a message to that person. And whenever now, now you'll be taken to the lobby, and you might go to the other chat or anything. But if you go back to that specific chat, the transition will be from the bottom to the top.
Yeah.
And also, there was like some side effects, if you went to other conversation, and you started a topic there. And you went back to that chat, yeah, so you will, you'll see.
Topic would go into that chat, okay, yeah.
Yeah, so yeah, all those side effects is coming in from one navigation issue there, so uh I figured that, so I was working on a solution where.
Okay. Okay, let, let's do this. Um Ismail, can you create a build now? And just do a QA build. Um and then when Amin is done with that bug fix, and the, and the other thing with the start the convo. We'll do another production build with any little other last little things we get. Um before the end of the day, but I wanna at least see the, the, what we have so far. And make sure everything's uh working as expected.
Okay, let me get that, oh, I'm going right now, cuz I do have to drop it, um it's Friday, so I'll get that over before I leave right now. Or that running.
Okay, sounds good, and then, yeah, I mean, focus on the um, the bug fix, that's a weird edge case bug. Um and then Jerry maybe had questions for you regarding the deep link, dynamic links, or where do we leave off, Jerry?
I forwarded that information to Amin, uh I sent him the screenshot in the, the message that I left, that. When you click a universal link in chat, it opens Safari rather than circles.
Well, yeah, um I get it, well, that's not what we want, but like, I think. As Jay was explaining, that's more like a feature, and I feel like it is, because universal links are there to take users to your app. Now the users are in your app, so what's gonna happen, like normally should happen, nothing, or just. Forward them somewhere else, I think I was just think takes them to Safari, because that's the thing, the. Your app, so um, so yeah, uh I know, so I, I will look into it and see if there is like um a native solution to it. Where like we're not have to do any custom handling or anything, where we're gonna be like, hey. This is our link, don't try to take users out of our app. If there is like a native solution, that will be great, meaning we're not having to do a lot of work. If not, then as Jay was explaining, we will handle those links in chat differently. To navigate um through the screen with our universal link.
Yeah, sorry, um I just have to drop, I just, uh the build is up, it should be uh available in thirty.
Okay. Share John, regarding the universal link, I got the.
Okay, I was talking on me, uh. Is me already dropped, but yeah, so, but I mean, how come? Um if you, if you share the link in Slack, it opens circles.
Well, tha- that's kinda what Amin was saying, that it's more feature, because it, it wants to get you in the app. But it can't try to keep you in the app. Look at.
Hmm. So because we're already in the app, well, why don't we use a different kinda link? Is that, is there an answer there?
I mean, but yeah, like.
Same concept, really.
Well, I mean, we're in app. You know, we don't have a way of uh essentially navigating somebody.
Well, Amina, I don't see why when you tap that link, we can't intercept the URL. And then if it's one of our configured universal linking domains, we process it as an internal link.
Yeah, that's why I was gonna say that like a native solution, where. We're gonna be kind of white lies in our, those URLs there to not open uh Safari.
Is that a pretty straightforward approach?
Uh that's that I don't know, that's what I will look into to see, but, but if there is a thing like that, that means. It will be a straightforward, because it's gonna be a native solution, things will be built in for us, we don't have to do any custom stuff.
Okay, and then it could still be shared outside of the app? Okay, and then it could still be shared outside of the app too.
Yeah, that's how it is right now.
Right, okay, okay, we'll put that as like a third priority, and then speaking of um. Of the native situation, I did have that app crash and we don't know. Did it, was there any indication why the app crashed on me this morning?
Um, yeah, so the century issue and in the stack trace, there's like uh. One signal was mentioned there, yeah. I I don't know how one signal can, so but like what crashed it is like. One signal was trying to handle a notification and the data was flowed as a JSON. And that JSON is not formed, it was like a. It was like um. And now like a key, like to to read date that it uh the data read by key. And they were like expecting a key there, but that key was missing. And things crashed and it says does not like the main thing, like the main. That that the the issue is called uh recognized selector and unrecognized selector. And then there was some key that was not expected there there or something like. Yeah, and that JSON, something was not expected, which is, this is on the native level of.
It's gonna happen again and again.
I mean, I didn't see where John got a notification at that time.
Maybe it didn't get like an a real notification, maybe just a silent notification or something like that.
What kind of silent notification?
There is a type like they call si- silent notification where. Users don't see the notification, but there is a notification and.
You're like what?
Also. Uh, also like if you the stack trace, there is like a task on queue. So maybe one signal have something that's um. Maybe it's not even a notification, maybe one signal have some key or some tasks. I that are running.
Yeah, I was kind of with you, I was gonna bring that up too, looked like that they were doing, they're doing some kind of background fetch. It's almost like going for a notification and that their API might have returned some kind of five hundred error.
Mm hmm.
That that's that's what I did see that could have been a possibility too that. We it was just a polling that hit wrong, but it was all from one signals native code.
Yeah, um. Let me see what the like if there's anything in the repo, um, and see. Yep, there is something, um.
Hey, Amit, did you ever look into that uh white white screen issue?
I mentioned that yesterday stand up. Uh, so we are getting from the API, we are getting the profile details, so I have forwarded to Ismail yesterday itself to look into that.
Okay, so it's up to Ismail now?
Yes.
Okay.
So I found an issue like it was like December twenty four of the last year. Where like the same one, like the same issue we're having. And they mentioning it's fixed. Let me see if it's fixed. And let me see if we're using the same version or not.
Hey Jerry, you know that little ticket that we use for invites, like an image of a like a movie ticket stub?
Yeah.
Our original design. We had um. Some some info on it where it said like John W and Chantel M and seventy two others are on circles. And I know we said it would be like a little tricky, but I think it would go a long way and.
Wait, what what's this? So if I go to, this is in, oh, you're sharing something with me.
Yeah, I just I sent you a example of it. Um, so obviously it would have to be like dynamic. Which I don't know, you know, in our ticket, is that an angle? So I don't know.
Oh, that shouldn't be a problem, um, but. Let's see.
That bottom section would be.
Yeah, where 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 would that seventy two and seventy two come from?
Um, I think it would be the uh connections that are among.
Ah, I see.
The invitee um and invitor.
Yeah, so this wouldn't work for campaigns, I see.
No.
This would just be for direct.
Well, wait, 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 no, it would.
Why would this work? This can't work for campaigns.
Well, yeah, because we wouldn't know who you're inviting.
Right, we don't know who you're inviting.
Yeah, true. Right, not so much for the campaigns, but. Or the direct invites, which is, those are the ones that seem to be hardest to convert anyway. But I think this would help if like you knew your other friends were there too.
Yeah, is this in? Is this in Figma?
Yeah, probably, um, it's been modified a lot since then, so maybe maybe.
Let's see. Get that to me, um, if you if you wanna implement it, uh, get it to me in. Figma and I'll need it without that top and bottom message and. I I don't know about that QR code too that.
No, we wouldn't need it, it's really just the bottom part that I'm interested in.
Okay, well, I would need it without the top and the bottom, like did Danny Hinkle sent you an invite, I I would need that.
Okay.
And then I would need that bottom part of the ticket blank.
Okay, let me ask Chantel there. Chantel, can you um? Can you modify our? Invite link, the ticket design to go back to this, I just sent to Slack where we would have. A couple of the mutual friends listed on there on the bottom of the ticket.
I'm pulling it up right now. Sorry, I said that like three times thinking I was clicking the unmute button. Uh, okay, so are we, so we're going back to this style?
Just the bottom section. Well, we're already using, we're using the whole ticket, that is, yeah, we went back to it a while ago.
Oh, I guess I just haven't seen that in a while, okay.
Maybe not, yeah, it didn't, I don't know, it wasn't converting, the new one wasn't converting, um. Maybe we do a hybrid, you know, what this really ideally, we should be A B C testing a few iterations of these. Which we can do fairly easy, right Jerry? If I gave you three different ticket designs, could we? Roll rotate through three of them and see which one performs best?
Yeah, um, it might work differently from like what we're doing for the the text, like the text message content body.
Yeah.
But I could, I could take it and be like, all right, um, like just alternate, like divide it by. One, two, three and see what happens.
Yeah. I feel like that'd be all right because. We could keep them in separate samples, like. One, one set of data along line of how many people converted. From the three different ticket designs and then how many people converted from the two different text designs and they'll. Those will both give insights. Because I do like the fact you were able to add the user's profile image on that old design. That we walked away from, but maybe a hybrid approach, because I think the user image on there helps too. So uh. Make it feel more authentic. That it's a real app, you know? Not some kind of spam messages received. Recognize your friend on there, um. Yeah, Chantel, why don't you pull up the designs, just look at it real quick?
Yeah, just looking at it.
Okay. And Amit, did you get back to me yet on the why those images weren't showing up on the the profile?
Yeah, so from the API, we are getting the image URL, but app is not displaying there.
Okay, so front end situation?
Yeah, I'm. I sent that message to Wells also, but Wells replied with just now, he's not still Monday, right?
Yeah, um. Yeah, will you follow up with Wells on Monday? Because I think, yeah, I think he made changes to that screen and then we lost the avatars.
Okay.
Okay, thanks, um. And then I know there's more stuff we can have you do. Um, we just need to think through and talk with Jerry a little bit, but um. Can you think of anything Jerry would want Amit to work on Monday?
Monday like first thing a blur has image, we like we discuss for you that I will work and other I will ping Jerry.
Are we done with the uh the topics for circles buddy?
Yeah, um, for the most part, I mean, I might edit the text slightly, but. Um, actually, wait, I haven't seen the images, um, did you change those icon images?
Yes, yes, that's a change. Yes, today I can use like also.
Yeah, I'm restarting the app. They're they look way better, okay, that's nice. Um, if we wanted to push this to production, Jerry, um. Anything holding us back?
No. As long as the the topics, I mean configured the topics correctly in QA and production.
Okay.
It is configured Jerry, so uh I have put the both the key way and production also.
Yeah.
Sorry, I forget to work on that, I need to write a script which will uh add uh this circles body topic. For the always either exist.
The script will do what a what?
By user who is currently onboarded. Yeah, that added, so I will work on that part also.
So it'll have the circles body message there for existing users?
We need to, we need to do onboarding again to see that circles body chat, right?
Yeah.
The current existing user, but once I. Will not do, we don't need to do onboarding again.
Okay. Okay. Um, I mean, I'm sending one change I want right now, will you do this one for me real quick, Amit? I wanna move this text up above to the very top of the message.
Yes, yeah, we can do it.
Okay. Thank you, and um. And you know what? I wanna remove, I wanna remove this sentence, I don't think it helps, it's just more. Words, so so move the one I said to the top and then get rid of this sentence right there.
Which sentence?
I'm talking to Amit.
Oh, okay, I'm looking at my designs.
Um, messaging my slide.
And John, related to that crash, um, the issue was reported to one signal and it's fixed. In the upcoming version, so just do an upgrade and that should uh fix it.
So we need to, we need to update our one signal version?
Yep.
Okay, are you gonna do that?
Yeah.
Okay, okay, cool, interesting, so there was a bug they knew of.
Yeah, it was like, yeah, like four or five months ago. And it's happened sometimes when their backend fails. And they were not like properly, they were like not really handling it good. When they're back on fail, so that's the crash that happened.
Got you. Okay. You're gonna need one more change also, Amit. Yeah. Yeah, let me, let me just double check with Jerry one more time on this, so.
Were we done with checking?
I'm gonna send you a question here. I think I need to change this word from followers. To friends based on our conversation yesterday about how.
That is correct, it would be friends because we get that, yep.
Yeah, okay, so Amit, we're gonna change the word followers. To friends, I just sent you a screenshot of this one, send her shares and cares. And then also. Do one other change here.
Friends.
Yeah, and there's one more that needs to be changed to friends, the one under it too, right Jerry, on the second and the paragraph right below it.
Let's see, yes, friends, yeah.
So this one too, Amit.
Um, well, then and also in the last paragraph technically.
Yep, I was about to get to that one. Um. Okay, so make that one. Amit, and then the third paragraph, I'll just remove and followers, right? Amit, and then the third paragraph, I'll just remove and followers, right? Okay, so lastly, Amit, we're gonna remove. The words and followers on the last paragraph there. Did you get all that?
Yes, yes.
Hey Sean, so these screens on the upper right corner, did you just make those or there's a whole?
Yeah, 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 I just made those.
I like, I like that.
I was, you, you said a, a combination, so I added this to this one and then I. Kind of changed a little bit of this, like using this here, adding the photo like it's here.
Yeah, I like that, um. This creates a lot of dynamic potentially, I mean, depending on which one, the one on the right. It's just the image and the bottom section, but the one on the left. If you were to look at that, Jerry's, uh, like the top section and the middle and the bottom. Is that getting him?
Okay, so you're saying top, middle, what goes in the middle section?
Well, if, first, Shontel, we zero in on the two that we're talking about here in the upper right corner. Yeah, so the two white and blue tickets. They, they have some dynamic things going on. How realistic is that to, uh?
Uh, so yeah, we're talking about the, the picture, the profile picture?
Well, yes, the profile picture, but also the name at the very top, Na- Nami Lynn, like that.
I have, we have that all, all that already. We incorporated it on the design on the left.
Yeah, but the one on the left is, um. Like a more standard, like solid background. A ticket, we add an angle.
It, it would help me if I knew what angle that text was rotated at.
Oh, really? Okay.
Absolutely. I'll tell you that for me.
Five percent.
Okay, could you send me that please? What about in degrees?
Wait, five, yeah, sorry, I said percent, I meant five degrees, I'm sorry.
So that's all you need to know, huh? That's pretty cool.
Okay, so send this, and do we still want it to say best kept secrets? Or do we want it to say get recommendations, get reports?
I feel like we should have a few examples of it.
Cause I've never really been into the whole best kept secrets thing. I feel like that falls into that other app. That got really popular, like the, see who's your crush or something like that. And, uh, I don't know, it just seems a little. Deceiving, I mean, it is, but it's not, you know, best kept secret.
Cause I mean, that is. Big part of it is like discovery. Like, um, especially with local businesses.
But what if you're using it as a chat app?
Even then, I mean, there's a lot of things shared that are. Somewhat exclusive. But I don't, I don't know if, if it, even if it converts, like it really, at, at the end of the day, does it, does it convert to a download? Is really the most important thing. Does that phrase? Make people want to download the app or is it? Nothing, you know, um, I really don't know. I feel like we should have, uh, a few different phrases. Like gas apps was, you know, see who likes you for, of course, for like. You know, kids, that's like perfect. Yeah, they're just entering puberty and like. That's such a hook. See who likes you. And they're, you know, so clicky in school and everything. So what do we, what kind of hook? So tricky, isn't it? We'll just say see who likes you. How about, uh, what? What was that?
You have a message waiting? One message waiting?
Interesting. That's.
We're not lying, you open the app, you'll get a dummy message.
That's true. How about you have three messages waiting?
Your secret crush sent you a message. It contains a photo.
Yeah. You were tagged in checking. Actually, you were tagging a checking would be very compelling, um.
It wouldn't hurt to auto-tag people into certain things too. Like if there's events that we do, like if we have a conversation. Event almost like, hey, we're gonna talk about this. You can technically tag somebody in that and it would be fitting.
Yes.
Or like a welcome to circles thread?
What about that?
Well, if you, if you had like a, like, let's say every time somebody on boarded, we had a welcome to circles. Conversation that they were automatically joined into, and when they're automatically joined, they're also like, I don't know, tagged in some way.
That would be awesome. Discord does that, like some Discord bots, but.
It does, that's true.
Awesome if we really get some traction. Because then it might not, because then you, you would know anytime somebody onboards in the app.
I just had like ten ideas. Okay, ho- ho- let me back up. So how would it work again?
Let's say I onboard, um, and as soon as I finished onboarding, I got, wait, sorry, I'll dial that back. Are we trying to get people in the app who have had it before?
Not necessarily, yeah, I mean, actually, there's many use cases, so even just when you copy a link from. Your chat, probably should say something different, especially if you're an influencer like Pika. Her chat should be similar to what Zane wrote up where he put a link in his bio on Instagram and it converted really well. It was, it said, um, something about like, I'm, I'm handpicking a few people. This and that, like it was pretty cool, but like, that obviously doesn't work for just a general. So it really, I guess to answer your question, we should have a lot of variations depending on where the link is generated from and what the purpose of it is.
Well, as far as onboarding is concerned, once a user is in the app for the first time, if we automatically join them to a, uh, welcome to circles chat. Um, and then, you know, there's a, uh, I don't know, a tag, a mention. Of that user in some way in that chat, and we tell them like, hey, you've been mentioned in a chat. That's appealing, you know, that's a, that's a notification, and maybe we wait until an hour after onboarding. Fifteen minutes after onboarding, something like that. Um, we could trigger it if the user doesn't like do much after the onboarding process is done.
Interesting.
It would be kind of trippy to like, wow, like right after you've opened the app and you're like, oh, okay, all right, I'll come back to this later, or maybe I don't really get it. As long as you leave it installed, if like thirty minutes later, an hour later, you get a message that says you've been tagged in a chat. That would inspire you to open it.
Yeah. I think, um, Danny always reminds me that. Face, one of Facebook's hooks back in the day. Was you would receive an email that said you were tagging a photo. And it was like. Crack cocaine. For people could not resist clicking on it, because like, what photo was I tagging?
Yep, they still do something similar. It's not as extreme now. I even have most of my notifications off for Facebook. But they'll say you have a memory to look back at today and that stuff happens a lot for anybody who used to have a very active Facebook account.
Right, right, right. And I'm not saying we say you're tagging the photo, but, but I get the premise of how they. Lured people. Yes, Amit.
Uh, can Sean, can we do onboarding again and check it?
Okay. Um, so how about, what other ideas you have, Ian? Let's, let's, let's get, this, this part, remember what I was saying, it's like driving me insane. Earlier today that we have missing opportunities, like, we're not converting nearly enough. Uh, invites. And I want to convert a higher rate. And I, I know our, our little ticket thing isn't. You know, it's not as, it's not compelling enough.
You're missing the conversation. I mean, I don't know if we've talked about that before, but that's another one that's like, oh, I got left out of the group chat?
Yeah. Or you were mentioned in the conversation?
Yeah, I mean, I like that because you'll want to know what it was about.
What if we kind of peer pressured, we had a way to peer pressure people in joining circles? And, and by that, I mean, so you see how the ticket has John W. and Chantel M. So John, if, if, well, if Nami sends a invite. And we know from that invite that John and Chantel have the receiver in their contacts. What if there's some way we could get John and Chantel to also send the person an invite? And then they're like, oh, well, man, all my friends are inviting me in this app.
Yeah, I like that, uh-huh. I didn't, I didn't know where you're going with it. Yeah, exactly, like that, exactly that type of psychology. Don't want to be excluded, don't want to miss out.
And how, how do we? Like after this invite is triggered, then how do we start a funnel that tries to get Sean, John and Chantel? To invite the same person?
Yeah. I'm just testing the, uh, topics for circles buddy, um. So far, so good.
Hey, Chantel, can you make a version of this that if, what if they don't have any other contacts and circles? What if it's like one or two? I mean, maybe, maybe we just need none, but, uh. That's a possibility. Nothing, we just do nothing?
There's no one else, right? Like, you're not gonna say zero others on circles, right?
Right.
No, we had a, what was our default? What was our, there was something already there?
Uh, our, well, we had. And then we did a free puppy.
Free puppies, that's key. How about free candy?
Very predatory. Yeah, very white van.
Yeah. Free crypto.
Free airplane flight. We're not lying, just get to level ten.
Yeah. Free stuff, I don't know, um. I guess, what, what do we have? Your friends are, our friends are sharing their favorites. Yes, it's not converting, it's not.
Do you think it's the ticket or do you think it's the caption?
I think it's the wording on it. I think the ticket's fine. I, I was looking at a million different apps. Invites and they all use some form of a ticket or something and it's really just what's on it, you know, like. Gas app has a great hook, see who likes you. And then it also says, John and Chantel and ten others. Are on gas app, you know, and so it's like, oh, all the cool kids are already there. People I know, why are they having fun and seeing who likes them and not me? So. It's the messaging, 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 so, um. Okay. How about we go up? To. We could leave it blank. Go, go back up to the ones you were working on? So, we don't love best kept secrets, right? So. We'll say. You were mentioned, how about you just, you were mentioned, or you were. You were tagged or you were mentioned or something, it doesn't have to be like complicated. And what happens if I, why can't I tag somebody who's not? In circles yet? That seems like a really good network effect, like if my friend doesn't have the app, but we're at a restaurant. Could still tag them. I'm curious. How this works in the app?
Well, right now, it's, it's like explicitly linked to a user ID.
Yep, there is no option to tag an external user. But it could be. How often would that happen, I wonder? I bet that would happen a lot. I don't see like this, this kind of, this little change could have huge impact.
I just sent you a list of some ideas.
Yeah, I've seen those come in. Let me get your opinion too on this, I get everybody's opinion. If you go, if you go check, hit the check in button on your, um, on your app. Down at the lower left, on the nav bar, and then, and then tap on places. And just pick a random place, but assuming that's. The place you're at, okay? Now, you've got a tag friends option here. Would you? Tag, like, I was thinking we just get rid of all these pills, following, followers, et cetera, and would you? Tag somebody, like, let's say you're a restaurant, would you tag your friend if their name came up here? And con, as a contact, and then they get the text invite ticket and it says you were tagging to check in?
Yes.
I'm down with it, because there's plenty of times I would want to, um. I want to tag people that I was at a place with, but they're not in the app.
How, how do we send that invite? Invite that would, that would then open the drawer, right?
Yeah, it would open the SMS, yeah. Well, let's think about that.
Cause that, that would also be kind of adding a barrier, I guess, to the, and think about it, what if you tag multiple contacts, what happens?
Well, we do that, it would be very same, similar, probably same situation as. Creating a group chat with some internal and some external users. We already, we already do do that. You check the boxes next to the names. And some of our internal, some of our external, and you send your message. And it's from Twilio, so I think that would be the difference, right? It would come from, we would use that system.
Hmm, so the invite would be sent via Twilio?
Yeah. Okay, you were tagged in to check in.
Okay, but then we would need a, uh.
Unless, unless there was no, unless it wasn't a blend of internal. I don't know, I don't know, but I think we're on to something here.
Well, you would also want this person to get credit for the invite.
Yeah, which they can, right, and within the link.
The link that we send from the, uh. From messages now from external chat, that's not an invite, that is not an invite link right now.
Right, but could it be?
I don't see why not.
Okay. Okay, make a copy of one of these, Chantel, and let's change best kept secrets to you were tagged in to check in. Yeah, uh, forgot, I was looking at that. Yeah, that looks good. One more.
Should we get the expires in one hour thing off?
Maybe, uh, I don't know.
If it's after an hour, I'd be like, all right, well, it's expired anyways. I wouldn't go any further, because that's just that extra ops to. I wouldn't go any further, cause that's just that extra obstacle of downloading yet another app on my phone, you know?
Right. Yeah. Okay.
Plus it gives a little more room to do things, to like.
So yeah, this looks good, Omen. Okay, thanks, Omen, we'll see you later. So if we wanna push the Circles Buddy thing, Jerry? Is that just like the backend deployment?
Yeah.
Okay, so I feel like we're on to something here. The list. I guess we would just use the list we use when you go to compose a new message and you hit the plus group button. Let's confirm that, Jerry, so go to compose a new mess, chat message? And then hit the plus group button.
Okay.
I feel like that list of names should be what we use as tagging. Because there's, it's a blend of contacts and users. And then let's walk through some scenarios, if if I tag let's say I test, I mean, there's like, the, let's start with the easiest, if I tag one external user contact, let's say. Then then should we use Twilio in that case, or should we just pull up the SMS drawer? Have them send it directly as a tag? Cause that doesn't seem like I'm tagging anymore.
For some reason, it almost sounds like I could recall like Facebook sending the SMS rather than the person.
Yeah, I think that would be better, because it's just a one click, just like it would be tagging any other situation. So, so then we send Twilio message with the invite link and says you were tagging to check in. Let's decrease that spacing just a little bit, Chantel, or says you were tagging to check in, let's bring, bring that sentence a little closer together. Yeah, that's wasting right there.
One thing about that list, though, I, I do have a suggestion because it's not, I mean, yeah, you can scroll through it and you can search it, but I think, I think it's iOS that does this on the contacts, I don't know how hard it would be to implement that there's, yeah, on iOS and their contact book, how there's all the letters on the right side and then I can like tap a letter or I can swipe my finger and it like goes through the list really fast.
Yeah.
Which, I guess I guess because of the pagination, I don't think we could do that, though. Because of pagination. I just find it very, very useful when I have a lot of contacts I need to go through quick.
So you would type a letter and it would move you down to that letter?
Well, on your phone, like, open your phone app and go to your contacts.
Yeah.
And then on the right side, there's like the list of all the letters of the alphabet. And then you can move your finger up and down that list and scrolls very fast and it jumps to that letter.
Yeah, we had something similar to that for a while.
Yeah, but it, it would only work if we just did not have pagination and have whole list in there.
Yeah. Wish we could do, I guess. There is a problem with that list, though, it also brings up group chats. If you search, so that wouldn't, we wouldn't want that.
I think it uses a different, it uses a different query. That must be a different query that it's using.
Okay, but for tagging, though, we wouldn't wanna
Right, right, you want, you don't wanna tag a group.
Yeah, so would you have to make a new?
Hmm, no, I think we, no, cause that would be the same query that powers the, the circle of trust. Yeah, I think your circle of trust, isn't it context and following?
Yeah, it looks like it.
Yeah, there is, there is a query that is called context and following, for sure.
And it won't bring up yeah, it doesn't bring up a group. Cool. Okay, so we'd use that one. Okay. Okay, so then I guess, okay, so then let's say I tag an external user and an internal user. I guess the internal user just gets notified they were tagged and check in. Are we creating a group chat with those three people? I think, I think we do that right now, like if they're all internal users, we create a group chat with all of them.
Right, that's what it does right now.
Yeah, so maybe we do that with the external user.
I don't see a problem with it.
Okay, so then then now, the external user has received an SMS from Twilio that says, and how the ticket, something similar to this. I'm just thinking, I was thinking about these designs, but if they message back, they message back the group, I suppose?
Uh, so we could, I think we would send it from two different numbers, or maybe we could send it from the same number they invite and just not show it in the group. Like in the circles chat that is. Okay. Yeah, we could. Just send them the invite and if they reply to it, it would reply to the group.
Yeah. Would they still see this ticket and it would be a link to download?
I think so, yep, cause it would be, as long as the URL is right and URL has the image, that should be part of like the chat app or like iMessage or whatever it is.
Yeah. And then, and we would know who invited you and we would know who got invited, cause it's one number to another number, so like we would be able to attribute the invitation if they onboard. Right? Okay.